Excited to hear from all of you and I'm going to turn everything over to our moderator Lisa Winkler. And one last thing, sorry, before I do that, I will be timing everyone while you're speaking. So when you have 30 seconds left, I'll hold up the 30 second sign. And when you have time out, time is done, I'll hold up the zero so that you know, okay? Thank you. Okay, Lisa, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Great. Good evening. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Josephine, for once again organizing candidates forum for candidates for the Board of Education in township of Westfield. I'm honored to moderate your forum. I'm a member of Legal Women Voters and resident of Summit. As a former public school educator myself, I believe public schools are the backbone for preserving democracy. I want to thank the PTC for recognizing the importance of a forum that brings candidates' views to the public, thus enhancing participation in our democracy. Lastly, I want to thank the candidates who are showing their dedication and passion for education and for the town of Westfield with their commitment to serve the community. The Legal Women Voters of New Jersey is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government by increasing understanding of major public policy issues through education and advocacy. The League is committed to educating voters to help them make their own decisions and participate in the electoral process. The League never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. As this is debate for candidates for Board of Education, I want to mention that the League, founded shortly after the 19th Amendment to the Constitution was passed granting women the right to vote, was founded over 100 years ago by Carrie Chapman Kat, an activist who had worked as a teacher and a school superintendent. I'd like to ask everyone to silence your cell phones and the format will be as follows. Candidates will have one minute for an introduction, two minutes to answer each question, and one minute for closing. We'll start with opening statements. Mr. Crawford, Mr. Diamond, Mr. Galligan, Mr. Galinas, Ms. Pepitone.
Okay.
Go for it.
Well, good evening and I'd like to thank the PTC for organizing this event. I think it's really important that the electorate here from the candidates running for board this year. I think, you know, I've lived in Westfield since 2010. We, my wife and I are raising two boys here. One is a junior at Newark Academy who was a former Tamakiwa School student. And my younger son is a sixth grader at Edison Intermediate School. One of the main reasons we moved here was because of the reputation of the school system. And, you know, thus far, we've been really pleased with the system. But I think we can do more. And, you know, it disappoints me greatly that there is no strategy along with the budget that has gone out for, is going out for a vote on the 25th. I think that is a mistake. I believe education is really about an investment, not an expense. I clearly believe that because in addition to paying my full tax bill here, I pay a full tuition for my son at Newark Academy. So I firmly believe in education. But I think there's more we can do. I have a background in strategy adiation, putting plans together and bringing things to market. And I think there's a great deal I could do to help this board, help this district, put together a strategy that excites voters and makes them want to invest in the district as opposed to looking at it as a burden. So I look forward to your questions this evening and thank you.
Mr. Diamond.
Thank you. Hello. First, thank you to Josephine, to Lisa, to Lisa, to the Parent Teacher Council and to the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate's night. I look forward to answering your questions. My name is Kent Diamond, a current member of our Board of Education with over three years of experience and a Westfield resident for over 18 years. My wife and I have two children, one in Edison and one in Tamakiwa. Should I be reelected? With my experience and established working relationships with fellow board members and administrators, among others, I can hit the ground running on a few items. One, strategic plan budgeting. The district is in the midst of developing the vision for the next five years. I was part of a larger group who attended a handful of meetings determining what the district's focus should be. There is more work to be done before the goals are finalized and then we'll develop bachelor plans, timelines, and budgets. Two, health and safety. This includes physical safety as well as social and emotional well-being. The aim is to provide an environment where students feel safe and where there is space for them to reach their potential. Physical safety includes the maintenance of our decades-old school buildings. Three, promoting diversity. Diversity should be celebrated and encouraged as it strengthens us by giving us multiple perspectives and experiences. Good luck to my fellow candidates. Thank you.
Mr. Galligan, you can just jump right in.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to the PTC and the Legal Women Voters for hosting the forum tonight. My name is Brendan.
Nope, lost you.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
You're back.
Okay. Okay. My name is Brendan Galligan. I'm a lifelong resident of Westfield. I've served on the Board of Education since 2013, having been elected in November 2012. In those 10 and a half years, I've served on every board committee and chaired all but one of them. Last year I was elected as Board Vice President, sorry, in 2021, I was elected Board Vice President and last year I was elected Board President. I'm proud of the work we've done on the Westfield Board of Education. During my tenure, the board has hired a new superintendent, mitigated the effects of COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic in a way that maximized in-person instruction for all students, hired a new business administrator, navigated the tragic death of Dr. Delson, handled numerous controversies involving students, staff, and the community at large. We've also celebrated countless athletic championships and recognized students for their achievements in academics and the arts. I've been recognized by the New Jersey School Boards Association as a certified board member, a master board member, and a certified board leader, the highest tier of recognition for a school board member in New Jersey. In addition to serving on the Board of Education, I serve on the New Jersey School Board Association's Board of Directors and the Executive Committee of the New Jersey Interscalacti Catholic Association. I bring those experiences back to Westfield where we grow, where I can help grow the district as a whole. Thank you.
Mr. Galinas.
I'd like to reiterate the thanks to the Westfield Parent Teacher Council and to the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate night. And to thank all of the people who've signed in this evening as well. I know everyone has busy schedules, so it's very much appreciated. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Charles Galinas, but people call me CJ. I'm excited to be running for the Westfield Board of Ed. And I have two young daughters in the school system here. They're both at Franklin right now. As someone who moved to Westfield largely on the reputation of her schools, and I'm sure as other people relate, that's a tale as old as time. I really would like to help preserve the top-quality education and school experience we've all grown to expect and love. My main motivation for running for the board is probably up to my best qualification, and that again, that's my girls monitoring their education. They're going to be in the Westfield school system for a long time to come and I want to understand and have a role in the development of their educational experience. And in fact, my girls offer often my best sources of intel as well, as they've shared much over the past few years. But to me, this is more than just a family matter. For me, every student matters, and that includes all of our kids with exceptional challenges of any kind. If elected, I'll endeavor to be an effective and passionate advocate for everyone, parents and family members, teachers and school staff, and most importantly, our students. I certainly don't have all the answers, but I'll undertake every effort to find them out, hopefully with all of you and for you. So I thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing your questions tonight.
Edward John. Thank you very much. I know we've just got a short period of time here, but I want to jump in first with gratitude to the Parent Teacher Council for putting this together, to the League of Women Voters, Lisa, for moderating, keeping us on track and on time. For those tuning in, the members of the community for taking the time tonight and for submitting the questions that we'll be addressing later, later tonight. And to each of the candidates here on the forum, thank you for, you know, committing your time, putting your name out there, all for the benefit of the town's greatest asset, our students and the schools that support them. So thanks to everybody. Just jumping into myself, I've been a resident here for 20 years. My husband and I have raised our three kids here. We've got two off in college, so we've kind of seen the K through 12 arc and the college admissions process. And we still have our son, our youngest sophomore at Del Barton School. All three of my kids have attended independent school, so I do not have kids in the district. So I have, I come with an out-of-district experience and perspective. So hopefully that brings some creativity and some independence. And I don't know if that was a zero, but thank you. Thanks for the introduction.
Okay, first question, the order will be Mr. Diamond, Mr. Galligan, Mr. Galinas, Ms. Pepitone, Mr. Crawford. Some people have a driving issue that spurs their interest in running for school board. What is the main reason you're running for Board of Education? We kind of covered these in your openings. But that was submitted questions, so go for it.
Thank you. My reason to run, well, several reasons I'm running for school board or running for reelection is to give back to the community, to be involved with the students. One of the things that attracts me to the school board is it's nonpartisan. It doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican. My view is you do what's best for the students and his kids of this district. That's really the attraction there. It's just, you know, everyone comes together in that room and what's best for the schools, what's best for the kids. And as I said, it doesn't matter what political party you affiliate with, and that's, that's, that's what I like. And it's good to volunteer and give time back. I do other volunteer work, but I think this is a good example to my kids that, hey, you know, we're fortunate to live in this town. Let's give something back to the community. And I feel that with my skill sets, I have something to offer and can contribute to the Board of Ed. So those are, those are a few of the, of the reasons why I'm running. Thank you.
Mr. Galligan.
Thank you. Um, my, my reasons for running are quite simple. I'm a product of the school system. I'm proud of what's happened in Westfield and I want to continue that going forward. I'd like to echo Mr. Diamond's comments, that the Board of Education is nonpartisan. That doesn't mean bipartisan. That means we have no parties. And that, that's truly important for education. There's no way that this could, our school system could be as successful as it is if we had to navigate partisan political lines. That doesn't mean there aren't outside groups trying to influence these elections. And I don't want, I don't want outside influence to have any foothold in this election or in our, in the school board as a whole or the school district. I truly believe in our mission here in Westfield, which is providing a successful education and meeting kids where they're at. I want to see all of our students succeed, whether that means going off to college, pursuing a non-college post, postgraduate career, joining the military, or taking a year off. I want to see all of our kids leave Westfield prepared and ready to do what they want to do and be successful in that mission. I've, I think we've been successful for the last, well, 100 years, but the 10 years that I've been on the board. And I would like to continue doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Galinas.
I, I did cover some of this in my opening statements, as I'm sure other people did. You know, again, my girls who are both in Franklin were, you know, my, my main motivation for, for getting interested in education in the first place. You know, my girls came up through the pandemic, so very early formative years were spent in the pandemic. And I saw a need there for the benefits of social, emotional learning in particular, which got me interested in, in kind of understanding education in the first place. You know, what curriculum would be, curricula are being offered, what teaching styles are available, what other resources are available for the kids. So that was, you know, that was the primary motivation to start me looking into this. And, and then as we've, you know, are now emerged from the pandemic and, you know, schools in full swing, you know, I, I want to give back to the community. And I think this is a way that I can do that between my interests that I've mentioned before. And, you know, as a lawyer, I have a skill set that I think would allow me to be a very effective advocate on the board. Thank you.
Ms. Pepitone.
Thank you very much. Yes, I think that's a good question for me. And with kids not in the school district, why am I running? Did move here for the schools, for the excellent schools, top-notch, drew us to the community. Kids became school age. It just became clear that their needs were going to lead us to independent schooling. So they've been there for the entirety of their schooling. But I do have, my sister is in the school district with her three boys. And so I get a lot of insight through my sister, and I have to say, really, one of the main things that led me to this was the pandemic. Talking to my sister on a daily basis, it was heartbreaking to hear the difference in experience between what my nephews were experiencing and what my own children were experiencing. And it just led me to think that there has to be a way that some of the, some of the way that the independent schools are handling this can be brought to bear within the district. It just did not seem right. And additionally, when issues have come up, there have been some certain curricular issues that have risen to the news level. I've been able to get myself down to the school board meetings, learn about the issues, and at times speak up on them. I'm concerned about oversight, board oversight over certain controversial curricular issues. And I would like to see the board providing that oversight. And that was also a moving factor for me.
Mr. Crawford.
Sure. I would say that, you know, up until late last year, I spent the prior 18 years working for one of the largest youth-serving nonprofits in the United States, and that's Girl Scouts of the USA. My role there was to deliver revenue to the organization and really fund its work, its good work. And seeing that and seeing the impact we had on girls really led me to think about doing something in our school district and giving back. I think I have a proven track record in terms of strategy development, plan implementation. And what I'd really like to see our school district take on is a little bit more ambition. You know, I have a unique perspective similar to Diana's in that one, one of my children goes to a private school. I saw how they prepared for the pandemic and practiced working remotely weeks before everything was shut down. That's just one example. I see the coordination and curriculum between the various departments, how one reinforces the other, and the intentionality of it. And I just feel that there is an awful lot we can do to move ourselves away from just being the status quo. And we are highly ranked school system, no doubt about it, but we can be better. And I think that's going to require investment, smart investment. I think probably not going to get that, this go around with the budget, but hopefully by next year, when we have a fully fleshed out strategy, a multi-year plan, and voters can see what the intent is over the next several years. I am hopeful that our community values education, wants to invest, and we'll get excited about that for the sake of our children because they are the best investment that is out there. There is nothing else that we can invest our time and our energy and our money in that is more valuable than their education.
Right. Second question. What are the biggest challenges facing our district right now and how would you recommend approaching each challenge? We'll start with Mr. Galligan, Mr. Galinas, Galinas, my apologies, Ms. Pepitone. And Mr. Diamond.
This, the, the, the main issues facing the district are, there's two of them, and they're, they're really linked. The first is our budget issues. Last year we had to cut 25 staff members when the 2% budget cap finally caught up to us. This year we are going to the voters with budget questions. I'm sure there will be a second question following up on the budget vote this year, so I'm going to skip talking about that. But setting ourselves fiscal sustainability is something that has been a problem. It's always been worked on every single year. It's going to be a problem going into the future and it will be worked on every year. The other issue facing the district is our facilities. Our schools average 88 years, average 88 years old. Our newest school is Tamakiwa, and that was built in 1964. McKinley is 115 years old. These schools need work. They need, whether it's systems upgrades to be more efficient, we need additional space. We can run programs like Full Day Kindergarten, out, the industrial arts and motec programs at the high school, hopefully bring some of our out-of-district special ed placements back in districts. All of those programs require space. Space requires money. Money comes from the voters. So we have to build trust with the voters that they can understand that we're doing the right thing. We're setting ourselves up for success and prove that every dollar we spend is an investment in the district, in the taxpayers, in our students, and in property values. I believe we, we have the trust of the voters. That's why we went to a budget vote this year. And I hope I'm proven right next week with both budget votes passing. Thank you.
Mr. Galinas.
Thank you. Yeah, I would concur. You know, I think the top issue that I am seeing as well as budget issues, you know, I recognize, and again, you're right, there probably will be a question on this later. But that in the, in an age of increasing costs, a lot of labor and other shortages and inflationary pressure in particular, I think there's a lot of work to do to make sure that, you know, going forward, we can still exist within, you know, our, our tax and have effective budgets set forth each year. I would lump in with that long-term capital planning. Again, you know, I, I agree that the buildings that I've seen certainly need work. And I'd like to be part of that discussion to make sure that long-term capital planning is done appropriately. I would add two others on my list. One is, you know, I'd like to see further interest in further work being done with respect to safety. And by safety, I probably mean, well, I do mean both, you know, safety from outside influences as well as just safety of the students within the schools in an age of, you know, increasing anxiety. A lot of the kids are, you know, I think in need of proper tutelage in that regard. And I know there are a lot of programs already in place. I think they're fantastic, but I would like to see more discussion on safety issues. And then lastly, for me, I think it's very important to emphasize further work to be done in inclusivity and accessibility with respect to the school. I certainly, you know, have been fielding a lot of questions and discussions from the, you know, constituents who want to know about the ability for students, you know, to be able to access all sorts of programs and classes and whatnot. So, you know, again, I, I think there's been a lot of good emphasis on that in the school and I'd like to see that too. Thank you.
Ms. Pepitone. Are you? Are you muted? Is she muted?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so in terms of challenges, I think that the school district faces, one of them is recovery from learning loss during the pandemic. I would want to ensure that the board has taken a quantitative look where they have measured, attempted to measure, analyze, address areas where they can get students kind of back to where they were, moving them forward and coming up with a recovery plan for that. I'm concerned by the amount of state mandates coming down in the curricular areas that the board, in conjunction with the administration, address those in light of this pandemic learning loss where they're coming down with all of these curricular mandates that are taking time away when we really need to be focusing on core academic areas. We've had the comprehensive health and physical education, sex and sexuality debate. There's climate change. There's, there's a civic education, you know, what is that? Is that civic education? Is that new civics? We've got DEI mandates. So we have mandates coming down all around us. And those things require professional preparation, curricular materials. And so I'm just concerned about managing those mandates in light of the already pre-existing pandemic recovery that we need to have taking place. So I'd like the board to be able to address that in a way that does not lose sight of the academic loss. I don't, I have no idea where I am on time. I apologize. I can't see any.
Mr. Crawford.
Sure. Just picking up on what a few of the other candidates have said. For me, revenue is the biggest challenge for this school district by far. Unfortunately, prior boards have kicked can down the road and tried to manage the, the budget by staying under a 2% cap that was completely unsustainable and not realistic and really did not serve our district well. As, you know, a perfect example of that is what we experienced last year with the, the staff reductions, which was completely unavoidable had prior boards made the choice to engage the voters with a budget every year. I would never vote for staying under a 2% cap every year. I think it's completely unrealistic. And I think we should be going to the voters every single year with a budget, with our ideas, with our story on why this is a good idea and why you should support this. I just don't believe in, in managing to a cap. I would say the second issue, again echoing some of the others, was the state of our physical plant. Our buildings are aging, but also our fields are in terrible condition. We've spent a lot of time over the last two years talking about one field in particular. And, you know, I, I think that that's a result of just not funding over time the, the maintenance, proper maintenance of the fields. And, you know, we'll have to wait and see what happens ultimately with Edison Field in the long run. But I do think that however we budget, if we're going to have athletic programs, we have this budget for the facilities as well as the classrooms. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves in a hole. But those to me are the two biggest things. I do think the state mandates are also a third issue. And what I would say about that is I don't think there's a great deal of visibility by the electorate into how much that costs every year. And perhaps there's a way to engage the electorate in discussing that with Brendan. Thank you.
Mr. Diamond.
If I could just interrupt real quick, can all my fellow candidates please mute themselves when I'm speaking?
Right.
We're getting a lot of feedback. It makes it hard to hear everybody.
Thanks, Brendan. I was just going to say that. Okay, thank you. So the biggest challenges I see are going to be similar in some ways. I see three of them. Strategy budget, two is facilities, three is safety. Budget strategy, as I mentioned, you know, we're in the process of developing the five-year vision for the next, you know, for that time period. So what things we can do about that is, is, you know, how would you handle it is be transparent, communicate, be mindful and thoughtful. Don't just throw money into a budget and ask the voters to vote for it, but think about what you want to do. Develop the roadmap, create the individual plans for each of the tasks, the channels, and then figure out what you need to make that happen. What resources do you need? What's the timeline? What are the dollars needed? So I think that's going to be the, one of the bigger challenges in the upcoming years, trying to finish up that five-year plan. And then what's that mean for next year's budget? Two is facilities, you know, as Brendan mentioned, they're, they're, they're decades old. They're at capacity now, maybe a little less so since COVID, but they're, you know, they're pretty full. With all the buildings going up around town, how's that going to impact the student population? Can they, can the schools absorb any kids that may be joining, you know, moving into those apartment buildings that are going up around town? What can we do about that? And the last thing I think is safety. You know, if the kids don't feel safe at school, they're not going to learn. And this goes from physical safety, which I know the district's done a lot of work with and I'm happy to see with, you know, protecting the buildings themselves so people can't get in, but also emotional safety. And that goes back to the social and emotional learning. So I think those are the three things I would, I'd say are the biggest challenges coming up. Thanks.
Okay, third question. What is your opinion about all-day kindergarten? And what would be your priority in instituting the change? How would you go about bringing it in? Mr. Galinas, Ms. Pepitone, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Diamond, Mr. Galligan. Mr. Jalinas, Miss Pep Tom, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Diamond, Mr. Galligan.
All right, I'll start. You know, I lived in Hoboken actually when my two girls went through kindergarten. And actually, I went through pre-K 3, pre-K 4 and kindergarten. It was quite, it was quite nice through the public school system. So I got the sense of just how excellent those kind of programs are. And I know that kindergarten itself has been a topic of longstanding discussion here in Westfield as well. You know, I, you know, I would go back to again, it's a budget issue, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's a funding issue. And it's a space issue. I think all these things require further discussion. I certainly would welcome a program, but you know, I think there needs to be further consideration, further analysis to really get to the root of, you know, how we can fund this and, you know, how we can properly situate it in one of our facilities.
Okay, yes, full-day kindergarten. So I agree with Mr. Jalinas that obviously it's preferable. The kids coming into the first grade have expectations with regard to reading and math and that it's very hard for a half-day kindergarten program to satisfy. My children did go through full-day kindergarten, not in the system, but outside the system. And you can see the kids flowering in that setting. So, you know, I do agree that it's a desirable situation. And the challenge is the space and the funding. And so I think that creativity and looking at things, seeing how can we get this done, you know, there clearly are challenges, but if we can, you know, say that this is what we want to do, there, you know, we can make things happen through creative looking at, looking at things in a way with a very, with a can-do attitude for the, basically for the kids trying to put this in place and get it going. I don't think it's anything that can happen immediately, but at least to get those those ideas going.
Mr. Crawford, go ahead.
Yo, I'm mute, Brian.
Thank you. For me, full-day kindergarten is truly about first-grade readiness. And with my own boys, my older son went to full-day kindergarten at childcare in Clark. And my younger son went to Lincoln half-day. And I saw a huge difference between their readiness for first grade with the older one being far more ready to tackle first grade. But I think beyond that, you have to look at, you know, the job of a first-grade teacher today is to really bring kids of all different levels that are coming in, some kids with no kindergarten, some kids with half-day, some kids with full day and level set them by the end of the year. And I think they would have a far easier job, not to say it's going to be easy, but easier if everybody at least that was in the system was on a full-day kindergarten. I think that would benefit the first-grade experience greatly. So I am all-in on all-day kindergarten. We do have to figure out how to pay for it. But I would rather spend our time figuring it out now than having to scramble when the state at some point mandates it. So time is on our side for the moment. But at some point, the state will come in and mandate it and I would prefer not to be scrambling and instead rather have a plan. Thank you.
Mr. Diamond.
Okay, thank you. This is something that the board has looked at on and off round of four years now. Brendan can speak to that. Pre-COVID, we had developed a plan where we talked about putting, you know, putting additions on to Jefferson and Washington and building classrooms there and then hiring teachers. So it's something that's always top of mind with the board members in the district and, you know, because we think it's important, it's critical. We're one of the few towns in New Jersey that doesn't have full-day kindergarten. You know, personally, my kids went to full-day kindergarten here in town, but we, because we needed, you know, we wanted the full-day experience. So I think it's worthwhile. It's something to consider and that, you know, it's I think it fits into that strategy budget thing I talked about in the last question, you know. Put it in the list too, along with other priorities that we want to do and how does it fit in? And then come up with a coherent plan and then bring it to the town, the taxpayers, the voters for what their input is. It's gonna cost X number of dollars to build a building, it's gonna cost Y number of dollars to fund the teachers and the supplies. What do you say? And then, you know, but I think the first step's developing the plan. Thank you.
Mr. Diamond's right. This is something the board has been talking about actively for the last seven or eight years. It's, the conversation was back all the way to 1980. When enrollment plummeted, the district was closing schools. We closed three elementary schools and almost closed Roosevelt because enrollment was under 3,500 students. At that time, they talked about full-day kindergarten and the argument was at the time, what we've had has worked, so why change it? And that's been, that's a conversation that happens constantly. Well, we have work, so why change it? As Mr. Crawford mentioned, when a first-grade teacher gets their class at 19, 21 kids, only a third of our kids go to half-day, our half-day kindergarten. Two-thirds of the kids go to kindergarten outside of the district. So that means that when we go to make, go from half-day to full-day kindergarten, we can't just double the number of classrooms. We have to more than triple the number of classrooms available. And that doesn't even take into account that the federal government was talking about mandating not just kindergarten, but two years of preschool. We need a building the size of the high school to handle all of that. Luckily, that bill didn't pass and the state isn't seriously taking up any legislation on preschool. But kindergarten is going to happen at some point. There's 7%, we're one of the 7% of districts in the state that still don't have full-day kindergarten. Which is remarkable considering the the finite resources of this town plus factored in against the academic outcomes of our students. If we started earlier with our kids, outcomes would be better. We might, we might fall out of, rise out of that top tier to be the top district in the state. I wasn't a huge fan of our plan to add additions to Jefferson and Washington. I thought there were better options. I'd like to see us build on the Elm Street Field property, a new school. So we have four elementary schools, north side and south side, and return to the neighborhood kindergarten model that I grew up with. More to be discussed on that with long-term facility planning, but it's something I've been pushing for as long as I possibly can. Thank you.
Right. The fourth question. Do you support making sure that Westfield students are presented with accurate, age-appropriate information about US and New Jersey history in order to have a sound historical context through which to understand current conditions and issues? We'll start with Miss Pep Tom, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Diamond, Mr. Galligan, Mr. Jalinas.
Yes, I absolutely agree that students should be presented with New Jersey history accurate and age-appropriate. And that that really is the issue. I know I had brought up previously the issue of controversial curricular mandates. And what it really comes down to in each instance is balance and age-appropriateness. The board has a policy on the record, and that's Policy 2240, which requires balance. Controversial topic. And it goes ahead and defines what controversial is and these mandates by definition are, that is topics upon which opposing points of view have been expressed by responsible and thoughtful persons and are likely to arouse both support and opposition in the community. So in those cases, balance is required. That is differing viewpoints so that all sides can be presented. This encourages critical thinking, which is absolutely fundamental as our children are, from the earliest ages, critical thinking needs to be inspired and modeled. As long as the topical material is age-appropriate, which is the other leg of this, I think that they should be addressing historical issues.
Mr. Crawford.
Brian, you're muted again.
Sorry about that. I wholeheartedly agree that we should be presenting our history to all of our students in an age-appropriate way and that goes for all of our history. But what I would add to that is, what needs to go along with that is the context of understanding the views of those that lived that history. Too often, we try to make sense of historical things that happened through the viewpoints and the norms of today. And they don't make sense to us. And to me, if you really want students to understand history and hopefully learn from it and not repeat it, you have to take them there. You have to take them into the head of an 18th century person and how they saw the world. Doesn't mean that they were right, it just, but to understand it, that's a really important thing and I think it is often overlooked. Thank you.
To be succinct, yes, I do support age-appropriate teachings of New Jersey and USA history to our, to our students. I think they need to understand our past. Hopefully mitigating, avoid the mistakes of the past so in the future. But I see nothing wrong with teaching them about things of, you know, say slavery, you know, back in the day or the Civil War or things that may be deemed controversial. I think it's important to understand the perspectives on all sides as we teach our kids these things. It makes them into better individuals, better people, makes them more empathetic to others, you know, helps foster relationships. I think, I think all good things come from it. So succinctly, yes, I do support it. Thanks.
Mr. Galligan.
Like all my other colleagues up here tonight on the panel, I fully support teaching history, all history, US, New Jersey, world history in an age-appropriate manner. Where I believe I may differ a little bit is in how we teach and what we teach. And I fully agree, I fully support teaching all, all topics. Not everything in our past is warm and cozy. Some things are gonna be uncomfortable. They do have to be explored in an age-appropriate manner. Starting with objective fact. Where there's opinion or theory added to it, that needs to be falsifiable. Apply the scientific method to things. To identify, is this a good source? Is this a bad source? Teach kids how to analyze those sources at an earlier age. It shouldn't wait till the junior research paper. Examine good sources and bad sources. And that helps inform, is this a good opinion, a bad opinion? Is it a fact or is it an opinion masquerading as a fact? All of this feeds into making our students want to learn more increase that intellectual curiosity and that drive for more knowledge. Once we start that fire under a kid, it is hard to put it out. And no resources should be off limits to that child when they want to learn something. Let. Thank you.
Mr. Jalinas.
Hi, yes. So, you know, I think there's been a lot of discussion here that I would tend to agree with from the other candidates. That history, New Jersey history, US history in particular should be taught in an age-appropriate manner. I would maybe throw the question back a little bit and say, is it not being taught in an age-appropriate manner at the moment? You know, I follow my daughter's history curricula pretty closely. And I don't think I've ever seen anything that veered a field of that. You know, I do believe in facts. I do believe in, sorry, I have a slow network. I do believe in facts being facts. You know, I would say that kids are pretty resilient. I think they can handle facts very well. They can kind of, they build worldviews based on what they learn. And the question then would come, well, if it is being taught in age-appropriate here in the schools and kids can really handle a lot of details and a lot of information. The question is, well, where is the concerns coming from? And it might be that the concerns are coming from individual homes and parents who, you know, either may not agree with what the kids are learning. Even though, you know, I'm a firm supporter that I think teachers and school librarians in particular are just experts and they're excellent at setting forth books and resources and lesson plans that really make sense. So the question is, well, if we kind of turn to the homes themselves where people are maybe concerned about what their kids are reading because it's a personal opinion or a personal concern. You know, I'm fully in support of the idea that, you know, maybe they can make some choices for their student. For, you know, for their particular students. But in general, again, I leave off with throwing that question back, you know, whether or not it, history is not being taught in an age-appropriate manner at the moment. Thanks.
Your fifth question. If the budget is tight and you could only choose one, which would be your priority? DEI training or post-pandemic mental wellness education and why? Mr. Crawford, Mr. Diamond, Mr. Galligan, Mr. Jalinas, Miss Pep Tom.
Sorry, would you mind reading that back please?
If the budget is tight and you could choose only one, which would be your priority? DEI training or post-pandemic mental wellness education and why?
Yeah, I probably would advocate for the latter, post-pandemic intervention, if you will. I think that's the more immediate need. You know, our kids only get 13 years with us. And every year, month, day are important. And, you know, if I had to choose, I would choose that because I think that is going to do the greatest good right out of the box.
Mr. Diamond.
That's a good question. They're both important, but if I had to pick one, I might agree with Mr. Crawford and go with the post-pandemic mental awareness education. Yeah, that goes along with, with my, you know, issue before of safety, physical safety. If the kids aren't doing well mentally, we need to identify that sooner as opposed to later because you don't want that to develop into a larger issue, a larger problem down the road. Along the same lines, why, why the district could be dealing with that along with the families of those kids. Maybe the district does some DEI training and sends information home to the parents so the parents can help supplement something that the district can't do in the meantime. You know, it's a, maybe it's more of a partnership, you know, or collaboration between the district and the families. You know, we don't have so much money, we're gonna focus on this, maybe you can help us with that. We'll give you some materials to help. You know, maybe we kind of get creative if the budget is that tight, along those lines. But, yeah. Thanks.
Mr. Galligan.
Thank you. This is a great question and not just DEI versus mental health, but we've run through all of these value-based questions of what, if we can only do one thing, what do we do? Is it A or B? If we can do two things of three, what do we do? But this question, the two topics aren't necessarily mutually exclusive. If we focus on mental health and help our kids in a post-pandemic world, get back to what we've back to a pre-pandemic state, that helps the kids with empathy, with collaboration, communication skills. All of those are core tenants of a non-political DEI curriculum. It's very possible, I mean, from a DEI perspective, we want all kids to be, feel safe and respected in the classroom. We want opinions to be respected. We want cultures to be respected. We want people to be able to articulate their family's customs and why they believe what they believe. That can only happen in a safe school. So if we can, if we could only do one, helping kids feel safe and appreciated and valued in school in a post-pandemic world, I would have, put all the dollars into mental health. Thank you.
Mr. Jalinas.
Yeah, you know, I would, I would concur with Mr. Diamond and Mr. Galligan both in many regards here. I think if you're really stuck between choosing one versus the other because of a budget shortage, it might be worthwhile looking at the substratum of both, you know, what, what, what is the benefit of either of those things for the students, right? I think there, I think there are some commonalities. I think it really boils down to allowing kids to feel safe, to feel included, to have, be surrounded by a group of fellow students who also exhibit empathy and where they can form a community. And, and there's betterment resulting from that for each student. So, you know, would, you know, would I pick one or the other, you know? If there were like just two programs to purchase, say, you know, I would make the selection, but I think as Mr. Diamond had indicated, you know, a little bit of lateral thinking might be helpful where, you know, we could find, you know, are there some elements of one program that can be taught by parents? Uh, that, um, that, an element that can be taught by, you know, taught to say, uh, one, um, teacher, and then the teacher can help propagate the information to other teachers. Um, you know, here, for instance, you know, you could think of like, say, the Yale Ruler Program, for instance, that's, you know, their methodology of getting, uh, 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 instruction out to other teachers, right, is to have one teacher learn and then propagate it out to others. Uh, so, you know, I, I would, I would, I would try not to choose if I could. Uh, and to really just, you know, try to boil it down to, can we protect our kids? Can they feel comfortable and safe? Can they feel included? Can they feel part of a larger student community? Thanks.
Ms. Pepitone?
Thank you. Um, given the way the question was phrased, um, choosing between the two, I think I would have to go with the post-pandemic, um, mental health focus. Um, just given the national news and, uh, the manner in which our young people's mental health is crashing, um, and the impact that has on our communities, families. I, I do believe that bringing our children back from the isolation and atomization of the pandemic period can only help in every curricular area and investing in that now and at this time uh, before these kids head out, um, into their college experience, um, that this is money well spent. And I think in this situation, I would have to choose the, uh, post-pandemic mental health focus.
Okay, sixth question. Uh, how would you ensure that DEI policy objectives are implemented, implemented in a non-discriminatory manner? Please elaborate on what actions you would take if you were elected regarding this topic. I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Diamond, Mr. Galligan, Mr. Galen, Jelinez, Jelinez, Ms. Pepitone, and Mr. Crawford?
Thank you. Could you repeat that again? How would you limit it in a non?
How would you ensure that DEI policy objectives are implemented in a non-discriminatory manner? Please elaborate on what actions you would take if you were elected in regard to this topic.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Well, I would approach this as I would any issue or, or item that comes up in front of the board. If, if there's something I don't know about, then I talk to people who do. I try to get the facts. I try to get information. I try to get all perspectives. So if we, if we were looking to implement something, a policy or DEI in a non-discriminatory manner, well, what are there other districts doing? Have they implemented the same, you know, product that we're looking to implement here in Westfield? Uh, what have they done? What successes have they had? What failures? What pitfalls? Talk to people in the town. Hey, what do they think? You know, talk to, you, you talk to people, communicate. This goes to what I mentioned before in question two about being transparent and communicative. Find out what people are thinking, find out what works, what doesn't work. Uh, you know, we want to implement it and be successful, so we don't want to, you know, trip and fall over our feet. So what works, what doesn't work? And we, and you, you certainly don't want to implement something in a discriminatory manner, then you upset some kids or families or, you know, hurt their, harm their environment in which they go to school to learn. You know, you want to promote that environment. So before you do something, you need to get all the facts, all the information. And as I said, just talk to people, find out what's going on, and then what's the best way to move forward? Thank you.
Mr. Galligan?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to start my answer by explaining the role of a board member, uh, when it comes to implementing a policy or a program. As a board, we are not managers. We are not administrators. We're not in the schools. But we hire good people who are. When they come to us with a recommendation for a program, we don't sit there and fi- figure out all the nuts and bolts. They come to us with a proposal. Do you, do you want to implement it or not? Uh, in committees, that may be refined slightly further, uh, with specific benchmarks added to things by board members. But when the board approves a program like a DEI program implementation, we have to trust that our administrators are going to do the job that they say they're going to do. They're going to do it in, in unbiased, a non-discriminatory manner. And then we, we ask them to collect data and report back to us. Uh, we have to understand that when a new program is implemented, there are going to be hiccups. But that doesn't mean we abandon ship. We retool, we refocus, and we come back to the table. Uh, we, we update the program. Well, admini- administration will update the program directed down to the schools and the teacher, and the classroom teachers themselves. This is so critical to understand the role of a board member when it comes to answering questions that impact classroom instruction, because we are never in the classroom. If you're visiting your child's classroom, you're doing so as a parent. You're not doing so as a board member. Board members get in trouble all around the state for micromanaging and getting involved in the, in, at school level decisions when they shouldn't be. So the, the short of my answer is I will trust our administration to implement a new program appropriately. But I'll also ask to verify through data. And I'll, I trust that the data that's given to me is accurate. Thank you.
Mr. Jelinez?
Uh, I, uh, you know, I, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Galligan's response in, in many regards, you know, and I know there's some nuance to that question. Uh, so forgive me, I'm going to, I'm going to answer it maybe in a more naive fashion and say, you know, I, I think, I think the school board has been pivotal in hiring an excellent, uh, group of teachers, um, and administrators. I think, um, you know, we, we should trust in them. We do trust in them to, you know, to, uh, set policy uh, and to, uh, i- i- in particular with DEI. Um, I, I would say, uh, again, here's where the nuance may be that I'm not going to address. But just DEI by itself, you know, by its very nature is non-discriminatory, right? It's anti-discriminatory. I know there's, I know there's a little bit of, uh, you know, press, uh, on that to the contrary, but just taking it on face value, if you have a great, um, uh, group of teachers, great group of administrators, teaching something that I think kids really respond to very well. I think it's beneficial to the community, uh, and, and, you know, you know, I, I'd be, I'd be hard pressed to come up with, um, you know, just a straightforward analysis of those programs where, where it isn't anti-discriminatory. But to couple that with a second question, you know, what can we do? Again, the, the question is thrown back, you know, where is it being dis- where is it potentially being discriminatory? Um, and can the board, the board is responsible for budget. It's responsible for, um, you know, financial and fiscal matters. Uh, but there can be an opportunity for the board to also just be a venue where, you know, people can discuss those issues. If they do have concerns, uh, they can raise them there. There can be, there can be a public colloquy about this, um, and then we can, you know, uh, we can come to a conclusion whether something is a mix. But, you know, I, I, I would stand by the first part of my, uh, answer as being kind of the, the way I would proceed with that.
Ms. Pepitone?
Thank you. Um, question is, how would you ensure DEI objectives are applied in a non-discriminatory manner?
Correct.
Okay, I say, I think I do have some areas of disagreement on this. I do think that the board should exercise some level of oversight in this area. We have had, our district itself has, um, had some issues that have risen to the national level, uh, coverage, press coverage, and I do think it's our responsibility to ensure that these items are being, um, done in a way that's number one, age-appropriate. And number two, not inducing shame in a certain portion of the community, particularly the very, very, um, um, I know everybody's probably familiar with the "our skin," um, controversy that came up, uh, last year. To answer Mr. Jelinez's question, um, quoting from a kindergarten book presented to young kindergarteners. Um, you know, "A long time ago, way before you were born, a group of white people made up an idea called race." They sorted people by skin color and said that white people were better, smarter, prettier, and that they deserved more than everybody else. That page itself has, um, skulls on it. Um, so I would say that from a kindergartner's perspective, that may have some lasting, um, impact. Um, the phrase "you can't unring the bell" comes to mind, and, um, I find that to be something that rises to the level of board oversight. Um, uh, one of our, um, very well-renowned civil rights leaders, Bob Woodson himself, called out the Westfield School District with regard to its power and privilege high school elective. I trust Bob Woodson. I respect Bob Woodson, Woodson as a civil rights leader. Bob Woodson complained both from the perspective of, um, communities of color and, uh, just communities in general. And, um, I think I agree wholeheartedly that this, uh, oppressor narrative brings into the curriculum the notion, uh, that denies agency to our students of color. And, um, I don't think, uh, I, as he said, this is an, this is an abomination of everything Dr. King stood for. I can think of no better way to instill hopelessness and fear in a young person than to tell him he is a victim powerless to change his circumstances. So those things ring true for me, and they are, they are things that I hold dear, that school boards need to, um, provide oversight in areas where the bell cannot be unrung and that are hugely impactful to, to communities of color and, um, other, other students.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
Sure. Um, the, the role of the board is not to administer the school district, but to make sure the district is well-run. So the operational piece is with the administration, but we have to make sure and have oversight that it's being well-run. Any educational initiative, whether it's DEI or anything else, should come to the board, not only with what the initiative is, but also what are the KPIs that go with that? How are we going to measure? Not only the, the, the points, but also the frequency. And what does success look like in year one, year two, and beyond? All of that needs to be considered when approving anything. Um, and that information, as it's reported back, needs to be shared with the public transparently. Um, you know, I think, uh, parents have a vested interest in the education of their children. And they need to understand that whatever is being put out there has some clear goals associated with it that are going to be measured regularly and shared with them in terms of how we're doing. Uh, I think that type of transparency would hopefully, um, lift up some of these unfortunate issues earlier in the process uh, and make them a little bit more actionable as opposed to, um, just random complaints, which is, I, I think what we've seen. Um, but, you know, if, if there's a clear strategy, if there's a clear objective, and there's a way to measure that, uh, and there should be a way to measure that, multiple points, uh, and it's shared, then everybody knows what we're doing. They know what the objectives are and, and what the goals are, and we're either succeeding or we're failing. And I think that's really important in terms of, uh, maintaining the trust of the public and, and getting them to support, uh, what we feel needs to be done to make our schools as successful as possible. Thank you.
Okay, uh, final question before the closing statements. What is your position on book banning? Do you believe any book should be banned from school libraries or classrooms? What policy do you believe should be in place to respond, to respond to book challenges? Uh, Mr. Galligan, uh, Mr. Jelinez, Ms. Pepitone, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Diamond?
Uh, thank you. This one's easy. We have a policy in place, uh, where a parent can, parent or any member of the community can raise a concern about a, a textbook used in the district, and it triggers a mandatory review process. We've expanded that out to not include just textbooks. Uh, through practice, we've expanded it to include classroom resources, uh, library books. Anytime there's a complaint brought to the board, we have triggered a formal review process, involves board members, teachers, administrators. And it, they'll read the book, they'll decide if it's age-appropriate, if it should be, should belong in the curriculum. And our, our process works, uh, no, no question about it. So, half of the question, uh, my thoughts on book banning, absolutely not, never. Does that mean every book that's brought as a suggestion should be part of a formal curriculum? Also, absolutely not. But the idea that a public school system with libraries would ban books and remove them from the shelves is important. I can't think of a worse thing to do. Or truthfully, make kids want to read that book more than attempting to ban it. So our process works. It's been used multiple times in the last couple of years, and I'm unequivocally against banning books.
Mr. Jelinez?
Uh, yeah, I would concur with that. Uh, I'll start with just the, the book banning itself. Uh, you know, I, 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 I agree, it's, it's important. You know, we shouldn't be having, you know, uh, um, it's shocking that we're even having discussions about this in today's day and age. You know, my, my perspective, and I, I've heard this from many parents as well, is trust your teachers. Trust your school librarians. They're really exceptional. They present age-appropriate, great material. Um, you know, uh, to the students, uh, you know, I, I, I can't imagine, you know, a- a- again, I, I can't imagine how and, and when, uh, students have read books in such a way that, you know, it, it, it put to the, it really put to the test, uh, teachers' professionalism and school librarians' professionalism when it comes to selection of reading. Uh, I, I would never, you know, allow books to be banned in, in, in my particular house, and I, I would, I would relate it to the entire school district. But, but, you know, there is a process in place. That's great to hear. But really, again, that, that gets thrown back, I think, to the, to the individual households. If an individual household has a problem, uh, with a particular book, um, you know, there's a, there's, there's elements to it that they don't like. I think that households should have every right to tell the student not to read that book uh, and to make sure those books don't enter their house, uh, and that the child doesn't take out the book, right? That's a parent's right, and it should be, it should be respected a- at all times. And luckily, we have this, uh, policy as well, um, to challenge books if need be. Uh, but I, I, I mean, honestly, you know, uh, I, I would leave it at that and say that, that's the best course of actions to take. Thank you.
Ms. Pepitone?
Thank you. Um, the question was, do you believe, uh, books should be banned in schools? So I, I don't know about book banning. I, I obviously don't believe in book banning. Generally, I believe in free speech and the more ideas, the better. I think the larger question, it's sort of a, an inapt question, I would say, with regard to school systems. Really, the question is age-appropriateness. Because most certainly, I think all adults can agree that not every book that's published is appropriate for all age brackets. So the real question is making that initial discretionary decision. Where are those books being brought and who has access to them? I can't imagine that anybody, uh, on this, uh, screen would, uh, would accept all books being exposed to all students. So I was ha- I'm happy to hear about the process, uh, that, you know, that, that can be triggered upon request. Um, I think that's appropriate. Um, because if books find their way in that do not match the age of the, uh, the readers that are exposed to them, I would absolutely hope that the school has a mechanism, um, for addressing that. And, and I wouldn't call it book banning.
Mr. Crawford?
Sure. Uh, I oppose all book banning. I, uh, we live in a free society. Uh, books should be available, uh, with a multiple, uh, multitude of viewpoints. I am for academic freedom. Um, I, I think that, uh, that said, that doesn't mean that every book should find its way into our schools. Um, we have a public library. We have the free marketplace to get anything you want to read. Uh, the books in our schools should match the curriculum. They should match the, uh, electives. Um, and I think we have a responsibility, uh, as a district that if there is a question about the book, that we engage parents upfront and, and get a point of view from parents. Maybe there's an advisory panel a- about the book before we put it into the curriculum or before we match to an elective. I'm thinking of the Blue Stye, which came up a couple of years ago. And, uh, yeah, it's an eighth grade reading level, but it deals with some very mature themes. And, um, that's where I think it benefits us to take an extra step and get some allies in the community, um, that may have a point of view and say, you know, that sounds great, but probably not okay for, uh, early high school, probably better for later high school. Or they may say it's fine. Um, but I, I, I think, you know, we have excellent teachers- But I think, you know, we have excellent teachers. Nobody is questioning their recommendations. But I think, you know, sensitivities are always going to be community based. And I think it, it benefits us to do more to engage the community where there is a question upfront than deal with on the back end. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I agree with a lot of what's been said so far. As Brendan said, there is a policy in place. It works. We've been a part of it. They form a committee. They read the book. They come up and then they make a decision. I think it works. Parents can comment at board meetings, which they have and will. But, you know, it's a freedom of speech. I don't know. I don't necessarily agree with book banning. But I do think, agree with what some of the candidates have said about age appropriateness. Is that book right for kindergarten? Is it right for eighth grade? Maybe it's more suitable in high school. I think that's, that's something we can look at too. But I'm not a big fan of book banning or pulling the books from the library. Freedom of speech. Thank you.
Okay, we reached the end of the questions submitted by the public. We'll have your closing statements. I want to thank all the candidates and the P T C once again for participating in the forum and wish you all luck. The Board of Education is charged with serious issues that require endless volunteer hours devoted to the town's most precious commodity, your children. So I hope the voters will be, take the opportunity to become informed about candidates' views and the policies and issues presenting the town. Closing statements is one minute. We'll start with Mr. Jalinas, Ms. Pepitone, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Diamond, and Mr. Galligan.
All right, I want to thank everyone, everyone again. I want to thank the P T C and the League of Women's Voters for hosting. And to thank all the audience members for watching and participating with really great questions. Some of those I hadn't even thought of before this session today. I'd like to also just thank the moderator and the tech support as well for doing such a great job tonight. I hope over the course of this evening, I have shown that every student really matters, that a school system must responsibly continue its emphasis on the safety of our students, teachers, and school staff. We must ensure that S E L is embedded in the curriculum at every developmental stage and is reflected in each activity during and after school. And that we provide for accessibility and inclusion for all students, including those with exceptional challenges. I care about Westfield a lot, and I want to see its school system continue to grow and thrive and maintain its status as one of New Jersey's best. Our students deserve nothing less. So thank you again. And when you go to the voting booth on April 25th, please remember, vote for column four. Thank you.
Thank you again. I wanted, I agree with Mr. Jalinas to, again, thank everybody who is involved with putting this together. The questions were excellent. They were probing. And much thanks to all who moderated and who came out to watch. I want to ask everybody to come out to vote on the 25th, whether you have kids in the schools or you don't have kids in the schools. I still believe that this school system and the students that are in it are really the community's greatest asset. And so everybody has an interest in coming out, both to vote for Board of Ed members and to have your voice heard on ballot questions. So if you're not in town on Tuesday, April 25th, please contact the Union County Clerk to find out about getting a mail-in ballot. And please come out to vote. I humbly request your vote, column two. I will always have an open ear, an open mind. I will use all the diligence and skills at my disposal to research issues. I will use my outside independent perspective to find creative solutions for the benefit of the Westfield student while working within the fiscal constraints of our tax base. I hope you can check out some of my other statements in the leader, in the Tap Into online news source, and on the Board Candidate bio page. Thank you very, very much.
I'd just like to thank everyone for participating in this this evening. I'd like to thank the P T C and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this and for running what I thought was a very good meeting. Really appreciate my candidates and their viewpoints this evening, as well as the questions. You know, I would say that there's big decisions to happen in this district over the next two to three years. You know, we've gone through an extended period, unfortunately, where we really hid behind a 2% cap as opposed to taking on the voters every year. And, but that's the past, right? We have to deal with where we are now and what we're going to do in the future. And what I am hoping is that I can bring some ambition to this district and hopefully some focus in terms of trying to keep us ahead of the curve. So we can maintain our status, if not increase our status. You know, we are very lucky to live in a very affluent community. And I do believe that most parents take a great interest in their children's success and education. And I think there's much we can do. So I hope you come out and vote. I am row column three or column C, depending on the number or letter. And I appreciate your attention this evening. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Josephine and Lisa and Lisa, the P T C and the League of Women Voters for organizing this. I think it's been great. Thank you for the audience members for their questions. And thank you to my fellow candidates. You know, these, these events are good because it gives us a chance to hear what we think about what the candidates feel about the issue because not only am I a candidate, but I'm a voter. So I'm learning about the candidates at the same time as you are. So I thank you for the opportunity. I present myself as an experienced current Board of Ed candidate with no hidden agenda or preconceived notions. I offer my skills and talents in building budgets and financial and operational analysis, in building strong meaningful relationships, and in listening. I offer my reliability and commitment as I know the hours involved in going to committee meetings, board meetings, talking to others, and gathering information. Further, I bring an open mind to the Board of Ed as I gather as much information as possible on issues, talk to people I represent, consider the financial impact, and support decisions that best serve your children in the Westfield School District. In this town of ours, we value superior education, preparing our kids for their lives ahead of them. As a board member, I will use my experience for the benefit of your kids in our district as I am committed to maintaining our level of education and continue to improve in areas such as diversity. As issues come up, such as full day kindergarten, I will seek out the opinions and perspectives of others as well as gather the necessary data so as I can make an informed decision. As you go to the polls on April 25th, to vote for the school budget, vote yes. I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you for your time this evening, and have a good night.
Thank you to the P T C for hosting tonight and the League of Women Voters for moderating. Thank you to the, at one time, 77 attendees. It's, a few have dropped off as we're wrapping up. And thank you to my fellow candidates, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Pepitone, Mr. Kalinas, and Mr. Diamond. The town is lucky to have five people willing to donate their time. That's really what it is. We're, it's a volunteer position. And each of you are willing to donate your time for three years. So as a resident of Westfield, thank you to each of you for your willingness to put yourself out there. The questions tonight have been probing, seeking a little bit of controversy. At times, I would have wished there was a rebuttal. There are definitely things that could have been commented on. But one question was missing tonight. And that was, do you support the budget vote? Do you support question one? Do you support question two, and why? I really would have loved to hear how my fellow candidates tonight feel about those two questions. I know I would have loved to, for the public to hear that as well. I unequivocally support both questions. The only add, the only additions that we're adding this year are, it's a conservative ask in question two. We're adding a couple of interventionists at the intermediate school. These are COVID related issues. We have data to back it up, as Ms. Pepitone brought up in question two. Do we have data on learning loss? Yes, we do. And this is why we need those interventionists. This is why we need additional guidance counselors and student assistance counselors, because we have the data. I implore the town, please vote yes for question one and question two. I also ask humbly for your vote. Please, please give me another term on the board. I'm the most experienced member of the board currently, I'm the current board president with 11 years' experience. I am proud of every vote I've made along the way, every decision that's been, been made, every debate that's happened along the way. I stand by my record and I ask the board, or I ask the town to, to vote yes for, to vote for me. But if you're not going to vote for me, please vote for the budget. My, my own ambitions aside, please vote for the budget. Don't hurt our students. Thank you.
Lisa, we can't hear you. Okay, I think we lost her. I just want to thank everybody for attending tonight. And thank you all of the candidates and for your answers and for participating. And I just want to wish everyone a wonderful evening and of course, get out there and vote April 25th. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.